I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anker, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen, Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan. Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Dave told me he's at something for the...
KSMQ.
KSMQ, yes.
He's gonna try and get here when they're done. Wouldn't be till after 7:00. Okay, item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two is a motion for the approval of the minutes from May 18th, 2015. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three, are any citizens present tonight that want to address the council? It's anything that are not, is not on the tonight's agenda. Yes, you want to say something?
Oh, yes.
You gotta give us your name and...
I'm Gene Novak, and my address is 1611 4th Avenue Southeast, Austin, Minnesota, 55912. And I'm here to address the council tonight about getting some answers on our, talk about our flood wall. I was informed the other day about quite a few people in our community, what you're planning for the flood wall and putting up where they got, they have these panels that the, first question, I'd like to have the council wait until I'm all done with, since I only got five minutes.
Two minutes is what we usually give. Keep going.
Are you kidding? Two minutes? Come on.
Yeah, but if you make sense or not.
Get real. Anyway, so these panels, and was these panels put in, when they put the flood wall in, was these panels put in for the idea that we were gonna, I don't know whose idiotic idea it is to put those pictures, you know, in there? But I hope, I am hoping, and so is a lot of people in this community, because I have checked in that, that we're not talking about, they said prominent people. Well, prominent people, and that tells me only one thing, and it tells everybody here one thing. Let's look at, if you are gonna do the, put pictures in, let's get some of the, there ain't no middle class, so let's get some of the poor people's pictures of what they've done in this community. Not your, I am not saying no names, but you know who I'm talking about, and I don't need to say no names. But let's not do this. Let's not take all these prominent people in town and plaster them all over. We have mayors in this town, and my own personal opinion should have been run out of town. That's my personal opinion. That's nobody but my own. But, and, in putting these panels up, in putting these pictures up, okay? You know what you're asking for? You're asking for a bunch of caffidy. You think anything like that is gonna stand up in this town? People, you're gonna put people, these prominent people, you're gonna put up there, and a lot of us, and I wouldn't do that kind of thing, but a lot of them would be disgusted in it because every time we do something in our community, it's always these prominent people that get the, front, in the Herald, front page, front this, front that. Let's look more at the senior citizens for what they've done in this community. Let's look more at, not the people with the high bucks and that type of thing. And, uh, and when, oh, and when the flood wall was put up, okay? What I want to ask is, was the flood wall, was that put up with the idea of putting these in? These panels, putting these, so that we could have these pictures and stuff of these people?
No, that wasn't the idea. That was, that was, we came to that idea afterwards.
Okay, and I do have, and I know the council don't have much, but I want to get on this committee, and I noticed that one of my favors is on there, and I want to get on this committee that they have, and I guess I have to talk to these people that are on the committee in order to...
They're appointed by the city council.
Well, all right, then, aha, thank you very much. It's point, and I'd like to be appointed...
Actually, I think they're appointed by the mayor, aren't they, Tom?
Appointed by the mayor.
Approval of the council.
Approval of the council.
And the committee's been selected for the inaugural year, so...
So they're, they're appointed by me.
Okay, I would ask the mayor, at this time, to appoint me on this committee.
That is not going to happen.
And I didn't figure it was, to be honest. No, I didn't, and I can, I want to make the statement why. What I looked on...
You know what, your two minutes are up, but you can come in, you can call me, whatever. I'm, you know, you're not asking me, you're just trying to make statements.
Yeah, I know, Tom, I, I'm just gonna tell one more thing.
One more thing.
Before it gets to, yeah, and I know, Tom.
We quit calling at the council because, will you be quiet? Now listen.
No, I'm gonna say my thing.
All right, done. Brian, would you remove him if he doesn't, sit down?
Boy.
You ruined the coffee with the council, I'm not gonna let you ruin something else.
Oh, you've ruined plenty.
I sure have. Okay, anybody else want to address the council on things that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving forward, under the, we need a motion for the consent agenda. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, on public hearings. Public hearing petitioned by Northland Restaurant Group, Hardee's Restaurant, for a tree mitigation plan. Stephen, is this yours, or Holly?
Uh, this is mine. The Northland Restaurant Group, who is the owner of Hardee's Restaurant, which is being constructed across the street, across 4th Street from Burger King, is asking the council to approve a tree mitigation plan. The property has several oak trees, of which you're probably aware. The Park and Rec Department went out with me and looked at the trees and determined which trees were healthy and which ones were not. Of the healthy trees, the develop, developers were allowed to remove three. They're asking to be able to remove two additional trees. They have submitted a tree mitigation plan, which follows our ordinance and requires the addition of four trees to replace the two oak trees that are proposed to be removed, additional oak trees that are proposed to be removed. The plan would have five healthy trees remaining. Five would be removed, and again, the amount allowed would be three. The new tree plantings would be four, some shrub plantings, they have noted 21, some flower plantings of 61. The percentage of trees removed would be 50% instead of the allowed 30% if the council does grant the variance of allowing two additional trees to be removed. The planning commission reviewed the proposal. The, it was also noted that Spruceup Austin has worked with me and with the developer on delivering some usable portions of the removed oak trees to a southern Minnesota artist named Tom Wannick. And they have already begun removing trees that they are allowed to remove. So some of that tree material has already been delivered, or at least is being kept by Park and Rec for that purpose. And this recommendation is to approve the tree mitigation plan six to zero, and that was a unanimous vote.
Counsel?
I just have a question. I saw too that there's the tree mitigation plan, or their, what they're planning to put in instead. Is there a follow-up with that? Like if those trees, for some reason, don't make it, do they have to replace them?
Yes, we do, we do have a, in our ordinance, we have a, the ability to ask for a dollar amount to be able to replace those trees, but I talked to the landscaper, which is Dolins, and they said they give a year warranty for the trees.
Okay, thanks.
So if any of those trees did expire prior to next year, or prior to a year, they would replace them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from council? Questions, comments? If there is nothing else, we need a motion to approve or deny.
So move.
To approve?
To approve.
Any comments from the public?
Oh, it's a public hearing. Any comment from the public? Any written comments or things? Is Representative here from Northland Restaurant Group? Okay, I don't think you have to talk, it's going good for you right now, so I wouldn't goof it up. Okay. We need a motion.
So move.
To approve?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, number seven is a public hearing for the rezoning of property from a B2 Community Business District to a planned unit development petitioned by Torgeson Property, Inc. This is on that new project they're working on, I would assume? It looks pretty good out there.
The building would probably not go up until 2017, however, the owners of the property want to get that, want to get that property properly zoned and get the plan in front of the council and approved prior to that project commencing. The planned unit development requires a pretty high degree of planning and getting the entire plan in place prior to the actual build. The planned unit development is kind of a hybrid between a normal rezone and a subdivision plan. So the, the proposed new building would go in this area here, and that's a big footprint that kind of includes the additional parking that would be added, as well as the building that is proposed. The reason for the planned unit development is to deal with some of the zoning variations that would be required to add this building into this area, which is currently two lots, which would be combined to make one lot. The underlying zoning would still apply. The planned unit development, although it's its own zoning district, is, as a practical matter, more of an overlay of the existing zoning. The, the, the developers proposing at this point, just this preliminary plan for the council to review. The planning commission reviewed the preliminary plan application. They made the recommendation to approve, tentatively approve, the preliminary plan six to zero, which was a unanimous vote. The developers would come back with a final plan, they're planning to do that sometime in July, probably, and then they would have all of the issues ironed out. Right now, we have completed review with the city staff and the utilities. There were some questions about utility issues, which have been addressed, and those will be ironed out in the final plan. So this is just a, just a preliminary plan for the council to look at. And if you have any questions, the architect for the developers here to answer any additional concerns you might have.
Counsel? Nothing from the council? Once again, it's a public hearing. Okay, with that, we need a motion to approve or deny. Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Number eight is a public hearing for a variance from required number of parking stalls at Borough Apartments petitioned by Shammel Properties.
Mr. Shammel petitioned the planning commission for a, essentially a variance to what would be required, because he's, he's adding some or wants to add some additional units. He would be finishing off six units in one of his apartments. He, because he's adding these new apartments, he would be required to be up to date on his parking requirements. To do that, he would have to add 18 stalls. As you see here, he's got currently parking in one, two, three, four, five areas around his apartments. The planning commission looked at the available parking, how much of the parking was utilized by the current residents. They heard Mr. Shammel's statements about his ability to provide parking for his residents. He indicated that he had very few requests for parking spaces other than just one per apartment, although he would offer two if needed. He'd only had two requests for a second parking space. Some of the apartments that he has are rented by Mayo Clinic and Hormel, and they have kind of in and out, people staying in those apartments. The, he does have a demand for additional apartments, partly due to the proximity to Mayo and Hormel in that area. He has unique property, which was determined when the planned unit development was approved, which does kind of limit his ability to expand parking. Though the planning commission did determine that because the parking there is currently underutilized, and that there's sufficient space for six additional units, that there shouldn't be any problem with off, or on-street parking, or anything interfering with the neighborhood, that they recommended, that the council, they made a recommendation to council to approve the parking variance. The actual amount of parking stalls right now is 36 parking stalls for, let's see, what would the total number of units be?
Currently 18, and we're posting 24.
So it'll be 24 units and 36 parking stalls are currently available.
Okay, counsel?
Are there any spare parking stalls for, like, guests or people coming to visit the people in the apartments? Or is there enough street parking?
I could probably have Mr. Shammel indicate what his experience is with his residence,
Hello, Kevin Shammel, owner of Borough Villas Apartments. Yeah, the typical arrangement I have is the parking permit right now, each, each apartment gets one permit, and then if they need another one, I supply another one up until the 18 available units, so that we currently haven't had a problem with that. But if there's a guest, I do have a guest pass that's also displayed, so that it's in the window. If there's a problem with that long-term, then I would ask that person to get the, the extra permit that's numbered. So, haven't had that problem yet, so...
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Once again, it's a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience have any input? If not, we need a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shammel. Item number nine, receiving bids for fire station repair. Mr. Dink.
The fire department recently took bids for repairs to the side walls of the fire stations. You may recall, we took bids for the roof a little while ago. Little bidder came in at Restoration Services, Inc. at $108,000. In addition to that, there's another $61,015 worth of alternates that the architect and fire chief have recommended approval on. It's within the budget that has been set aside in the Fire PERA fund for this. So the total base bid plus alternates is $169,015. Alternate number one, however, will be eventually reduced through a change order because some of the caulking will not be required for the windows because they're getting replaced. But at this point in time, they'd recommend approval of the total base bid plus alternates in the amount of $169,015.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution awarding the bid. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution receiving bids for replacement of the Senior Center Westside HVAC unit air conditioning, I would assume. Mr. Lang?
The last couple of years, we've been budgeting to replace HVAC systems over at the Senior Center, and this year, we're looking at some existing systems that are located on the west side of the building. These have been budgeted for, we have received a Hormel Foundation grant in the amount of $15,000 to assist with funding this project. And in going through the bidding process, we looked, we take, requested three proposals from three different contractors. Two of those chose to bid. Work would include two new furnaces, condensing units at 97% efficiency, the necessary ductwork, piping, and electrical, along with other, other startup for the system, with the low bidder being Hardy Mechanical, $28,730. In, to, also to reduce that amount, there will be some Austin Utilities rebates, which we've estimated to be about $3,600. And this falls well below our budget of $31,500 for the project. We'd recommend awarding it to Hardy.
Counsel? If there's nothing further, we need a resolution awarding the bid.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution receiving bids for airport pavement rehabilitation. Stephen?
Yeah, back in the mid-2000s, we went through massive upgrades at our, at our airport, and now we're to the point where we need to start maintaining some of that infrastructure with our taxiway that was built in 2004, and our airport apron, which was built in 2007. We're looking at doing some crack repair and joint repair on our, on our apron, as well as a slurry seal on, on all those asphalt pavements, and then re-striping. We took bids with Struck Irwin Paving Incorporated, being the low bidder, at $202,254, $202,254. This will be funded with 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% local grant funding sources. As, as we get into it, there may be some items that are not federal-eligible, which may cause our local share to go up one or two percentage points, but we'll work through that process, and we would recommend awarding the bid to Struck and Irwin Paving.
Thank you. Counsel, anything? If there's nothing further, we need a resolution awarding the bid.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, under petitions and requests, 12 is a motion approving requests from Chamber of Commerce for city services and use of city property in connection with the Freedom Fest on July 3rd through 5th, 2015. I see Sandy's here. Counsel, we've done this every year. Do you have any questions on it? Sandy, you want to, well, it's not gonna be a problem. All right, we need a motion then.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 13 is a motion approving requests from Mauer County Fair Board for city services and the use of city property in connection with the Mauer County Fair, August 11th through August 16th, 2015. Once again, we do this every year. If there's any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 14 is a resolution affirming the City of Austin's participation in the Office of State Auditor's voluntary performance measurement survey. Now, this sounds interesting. Tom?
Every year, we do a survey on Survey Monkey for the last three years or so, for which we are then eligible for additional 14 cents per capita of LGA. So this increases our LGA by roughly $3,500 if we go through the process as documented by the state of Minnesota. Again, we've participated in this program from the get-go for the additional local government aid. I think comments have been made in the past, it's not really that big of a scientific survey, but you've only got limited 10 to 12 questions to ask. But we'd recommend approval of this survey at this point in time, and then we'll have to report the results to the office, State Auditor's office, and present them to the general public on our website.
Thank you. Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution accepting donations at the City of Austin. We do this here almost every meeting. If there's no questions, we need a resolution.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a resolution approving consulting services with Hamill, Green, and Abrahams Inc. for the Riverside Arena mechanical upgrade project. Stephen?
Council previously approved a $20,000 design services contract with HGA, and we worked with them to design the upgrades to our equipment over at Riverside Arena. We're now beginning the construction phase of that work and looking to utilize the same consultant to assist us with some shop drawing review, submittal review, construction project inspections, and an additional $9,400. And we would recommend awarding this construction services contract to HGA.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a resolution approving consulting service, services with SEH, Inc. for airport construction services. Stephen?
Typically, with street reconstruction projects, these are services that our city staff would provide, or engineering department. But in this case, when working with the FAA and all the additional paperwork and, and grant documentation that is required, we have gotten a price from SEH to assist the city in overseeing this project. Their estimated cost is $23,000, and that, again, would fit under that same funding options of 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% local. And there, at the bottom of the handout, is a breakdown of total costs, including construction costs and SEH engineering fees.
Counsel? We need a resolution.
So move.
Is there a second? Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a resolution declaring the property located at 906 4th Street Southeast a hazardous structure. I don't know, do we need an explanation on that? Anybody? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dink.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 19 is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 907 3rd Avenue Northeast, the Leho property. We need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? B, two thousand four Third Avenue Northeast, Majoris, Majaris property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. C is thirteen oh one Sixth Avenue Northeast, the Hang Foon property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And D, four oh one Ninth Street Northeast, Wells Fargo Bank property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. E, four oh three Ninth Street Northeast, the Gonzalez property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. F, eight hundred Second Avenue Northeast, the Rainman property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. G, twelve oh three Eleventh Avenue Northwest, the Dennison property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. H, thirteen oh nine Fifth Street Northwest, Bank of America property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I, five oh three Eighth Avenue Southeast, the Wakefield property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We have two more. Nine oh four Second Avenue Southwest, the Loki property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And finally, K, nine oh six Fourth Street Southeast, the Wadding Baron property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're now to reports and recommendations. We'll start with Jeremy tonight. Jeremy?
Nothing, your honor.
Michael?
Uh, there was a community education advisory council board meeting last week. It's the last one of the school year, so I set updates for next year's meetings and collected new officers and approved new members. What was on the...
Okay, thank you. Janet?
The next Austin Sustainability Task Force meeting is Wednesday, June tenth, at seven thirty a.m., and there'll be a report from the ICS consultant.
Jeffrey?
I have nothing.
Stephen?
Nothing, your honor.
Judy?
Nothing, your honor.
Greg?
We met with Senator Sparks and Representative Poppy with the chamber's invitation to go over some of the legislative items that was decided in the session and those that were vetoed. And moving forward with a special session, we meet with Senator Sparks to talk about the wastewater treatment provision and probably workforce housing tomorrow afternoon, so we'll just continue to work forward on that front as the special session rolls forward.
Thank you. Tom? Chief Brager, and who else?
Mayor and city council, I just want to remind you, it was released to the media, we did have a promotional exam last Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, and Officer Kim Lenz was promoted to the position of sergeant.
Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. We are also wanting everyone to know that the pool opens on Monday at one p.m. Summer rec programs also begin next week. Our track program with the Westcott Field being torn up will be held at Todd Parks North Complex. It'll be a different track year, but it'll work. Thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing. If nobody has anything else, we need a motion to adjourn till June fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take it. Five-ten minute break. And we need a conference room for us all.